Alrighty. Good evening, Craig. Good evening, everyone. We'll go ahead and get started. Call to order the November 27th meeting of the Garden Grove City Council. Madam Clerk, would you like to call roll?
Councilmember O'Neal?
Here.
Councilmember T. Nguyen?
Here.
Councilmember Bowie?
Here.
Councilmember Cloughenstein?
Here.
Councilmember Kay Nguyen?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Beard?
Here.
And Mayor Jones?
Here. And we will first start with, I'll hand it over to Stephanie, and we'll do the Housing Authority.
Madam Clerk, if we could have roll for the Housing Authority, please.
Commissioner Beard?
Here.
Commissioner Beckles?
Here.
Commissioner Bowie?
Yeah.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner Kim Nguyen?
Here.
Commissioner O'Neal?
Here.
Vice Chair Tu Hau Nguyen?
Here.
Chair Cloughenstein?
Here.
And Commissioner Solario is absent.
Okay. We start with oral communications. I have no pink cards, so we'll move on to consent items 2A. There's receiving file Housing Authority status report for October and 2B, receiving file minutes from the meeting held on October 23rd. We can act on those simultaneously. Do I have a motion?
Move the ballots?
I'll set.
Motion received. Eight yes votes.
Any matters from Chair, Commissioners, and Director? Alright, seeing none, we'll go ahead and adjourn. The next Housing Authority meeting will be Tuesday, January 22nd.
Alrighty, back to City Council. So we'll open the City Council meeting. Can I ask Maria Stipe to lead us in the invocation? And then Mayor Pro Tem Chris Beard to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. May I ask everyone to please prepare yourselves according to your faith. Dear gracious Lord, we thank you this holiday season for your many blessings and the bounty that we often take for granted. We thank you for the service of all of our elected officials and ask you to guide them as they work to lead and shape the future of Garden Grove. Amen.
Please face the flag and your right hand over your heart. Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, so we'll go to presentations. We do have one community spotlight this evening in recognition of the 2018 Miss Garden Grove and Miss Garden Grove's Outstanding Teen and their Courts of Honor. It says 2018. Is that correct? Okay. Outgoing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Garden Grove City Council is pleased to recognize the 2018 Miss Garden Grove and Miss Garden Grove's Outstanding Teen and their Courts of Honor. They have proudly served and represented the city since last November and recently passed on their crowns to the 2019 winners. As an official preliminary to the Miss Garden Grove pageant, the Miss Garden Grove pageant distributes over $5,000 in scholarships to local young women each year. In addition to performing in a talent competition, each contestant promotes their community service platform based on current issues that she feels is important. I would like to call forward the honorees present and give a brief introduction. We ask that all of you please stay up front so that a group photo may be taken. We would first like to recognize those who could not be here tonight. Miss Garden Grove Sarah Bowie, Miss Garden Grove Court Princess Maddie Coriel, and Miss Garden Grove's Outstanding Teen Court Princess Sinei Molina. Representing the city and community with Miss Garden Grove was her court member Caitlin Agatep. Caitlin, if you could please come forward. Caitlin is currently at California State University Long Beach, working towards a degree in liberal arts. She hopes to become a grade school special education teacher for the Garden Grove Unified School District. She was sponsored by the Garden Grove Evening Kiwanis Club. Next, the City Council would like to recognize Miss Garden Grove's Outstanding Teen Sophie Nessery, and Teen Princess Sierra Bennett, Madison McCurdy, and Josephine Yang. Sophie is currently attending the Orange County School of the Arts during her year of service. Sophie was an ambassador for the Children's Miracle Network, and she raised awareness for her platform, Finding Your Fur Ever Friend, working with the American Society for the Prevention of Cruelty to Animals to promote pet adoption advocacy. At Miss California this past June, Sophie was awarded Miss Congeniality by her fellow Miss California Outstanding Teen contestants. I'm sure her beautiful smile didn't hurt her in that category. She hopes to attend medical school with plans to become a pediatrician. Sophie was sponsored by the Garden Grove Firefighters Association. Sierra Bennett is currently attending Garden Grove High School. She was sponsored by Garden Grove Shell. Madison McCurdy is currently attending Modern Day High School. She hopes to become a nurse, and she was sponsored by the Foundation's Dance Company. Josephine Yang is currently attending Garden Grove High School. She was sponsored by Farmers and Merchant Bank. At this time, the mayor and City Council would like to present the Miss Garden Grove Scholarship Pageant, outgoing title holders and their courts, with certificates and mementos in recognition of their 2018 reign. The City Council thanks you and hopes that your aspirations lead to your continued success. Congratulations.
Cool, congratulations, guys. Thank you so much for your work. Okay, so we will move on to oral communications. This is for all agencies. I do have a handful of cards, starting with Tom Raiber.
Hi, I'm Tom Raiber, and I'd first of all thank, hopefully everybody had a great Thanksgiving with their family and friends. I'll tell you about the first three days before Thanksgiving for myself. On your website, you cannot find until today, I guess, cannot find the ordinance 2155. It's buried under the Clerk's Office side of your website. But I did come down, called a City Clerk, and got the information about ordinance 2155. This is about the driveway approach, what you can and cannot do in the city of Garden Grove. So I read that real fast, and I had an idea, and I went downstairs to the Engineering Department in City Hall. Put my name up there on the computer. Soon as I walked over, they said, "Mr. Raiber, somebody's coming out from the back." So a lady came out. I forget her name, and she could not answer my questions. So she went to the back again, and my friend, Bill Murray, came out. He's an awesome guy. So he answered all my questions. In fact, he gave me Vincent's number, and I called him. Vincent came out at my house on Monday at 2:30. We talked, we talked about what I can and cannot do. The new laws on 2155 is that the taper needs to be three feet, not two feet, as the house I'm in was built. Also, where the water meter is, I need either be a foot away from the meter or by the fancy plastic meter cover and housing, which I found out the price on Tuesday. When Vincent was there, I asked him if you needed a permit to do this. He said, "Yes." I already knew about the property next door did not have a permit on their driveway approach. So he gave me step by step what you need to do. You need to get a permit, it needs to be three-foot taper, and you have to replace the sidewalk attached to it, all in one pour. That house next door to me did not do that. No permit, no sidewalk, and I did not go there again on their behalf. I went there on my behalf because a 10-foot driveway is just too small for me to get in and out. So Wednesday, I wake up at 4 o'clock in the morning, took my trash outside. Trash is right there, exactly where I put it. I drink coffee in my backyard, and about 6:40 in the morning, I heard noise. Leaned backwards because I could see right through my gate, believe it or not, my trashcans weren't there. There was a truck backed in with a trailer to the house next door, blocking the sidewalk. So I walked out there and asked the gentleman, "Why did he move my trashcan? How come you're blocking the sidewalk?" He told me to screw off. So now I know, what am I supposed to do? So I did call the police. They showed up after the gentleman left, but I was able to talk to the officer, show pictures, the time and date it happened and everything else. Just then, the general contractor, Dave, showed up, and nobody's knowing how to handle this situation. And I'm telling you right now, if the police department would have given them a citation for blocking the sidewalk a year ago, this problem would not be happening. There was no other cars on the street at all, and that gentleman could have parked the truck and the trailer to get the bulldozer out. In fact, he had to move it to the street because of the angle of the driveway. Also, I'd like to find out how come the 980 work schedule is still not on the agenda to be voted on or at least discussed. That's very important, because if I wake up on a Friday, I should not have to check the website to see if you guys are open or closed. Again, the city of Tustin changed. They're 980, so they're open five days a week, and they did that back in 2008. Thank you, and Merry Christmas.
John Rolls.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Based on the response you received from the firefighters in our last meeting, it appears to me that they were very happy about you going forward with negotiating with the Orange County Fire Authority. Based on that indicates to me that there are some serious problems in our Garden Grove Fire Department. I don't know the history, and I don't know where the money goes. But I implore you to do what you can to keep the fire department here in Garden Grove. I think our community is too large for us to sell out our fire department. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Gail Taylor.
Mayor, City Council, staff. I am, I'm Gail Taylor. I coordinate the Cypress College Americana Awards, and that's the event where we honor citizens from the communities we serve, of course, including Garden Grove. This year, it's on February 23rd at the Grand Ballroom of the Disneyland Hotel. It's our 44th event, and I want to give you a little backup information about your students at Cypress College. We have currently exactly 961 students from Garden Grove. The majority are from either Rancho or Pacifica. And those students, as well as any other students from Garden Grove, are eligible for the scholarships that we provide, and those are funded mainly by, well, not mainly, but much by the proceeds that we make at Americana. So I hope you'll consider coming this year and also recognizing your honorees from Garden Grove, who are with us tonight, A.G. and Kelly Anvari. Right here, you want to stand up? A.G. and Kelly are business owners in Garden Grove. They own Visiting Angels, a Living Assistance Services business, and they, through their business, they work with the Alzheimer's Association, Garden Grove Unified School District, ROP, and the Chamber of Commerce. Kelly is also very involved in Assistance League, and A.G. is extremely involved with Rotary. They are involved with many, many other things, but you'll have to come to Americana and hear all about that. They've both been presidents of organizations and have served on many committees. Our Woman of the Year this year is Jill Bolton, and she helps children through CHOC, Sagerstrom Center Assistance League Anaheim. She's a retired Disneyland Director of Community Relations. And once again, our title sponsor is Union Bank. So again, I'm asking if you, as the city of Garden Grove, would consider attending, of course, and perhaps putting a basket together of items from your city and lunch or dinner with the mayor or any of the City Council people would be more than welcome. Ride with the police chief or the fire chief, any of the above. Again, it's February 23rd. Invitations will be in the mail, first of the year. Have a wonderful holiday, and thank you very much for letting me be here tonight.
Thank you.
And we're really happy to honor the Anvari's. Very, very worthy. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you, guys. Maureen Blackman.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, staff. First, I'd like to say thank you to Mayor Pro Tem Chris Beard for the time you've served on planning and City Council, two terms. You've served our city with honor and distinction, and I appreciate all the time it takes to put in. You've done a really excellent job. Thank you. I'd also like to invite the community to a Mary Mixer, which the Garden Grove Neighborhood Association is putting on on December the 8th. It will be at my house at 12381 Mead Street in Garden Grove. Again, that's December the 8th, and it's from 5:30 to 7:30. Libations and refreshments will be served. All we ask is a cheery attitude and a bottle, perhaps, of your favorite beverage. Hopefully, the weather gods will be with us. However, if not, a warm fire heater and some hot cider will be. Again, I'd like to invite the neighborhood to come out, and it is an open house, so don't feel like you need to stay if you have other plans, but if you do come out, we'd certainly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Craig Duffey.
Council, staff, and Mr. Stiles. I would like to encourage the city to become proactive in education because you have, I haven't considered, was a licensed treatment operator at the time and a hydraulic specialist in two states. And I'll tell you right up front, it's almost like a doctor because of the qualifications and the math you have, and you have to be accurate. Our city one time blew up because someone of another agency turned a screw on a clay valve. You have different zones, and you have to regulate that flow. We were up all night fixing the city. I'm saying that you have King Curry books that kids in high school, learning their math and learning their chemistry, could become books that they could take, and they can write to the state and get a certification. My friends told me who are management are leaving next year, three of them, in the city. If you don't have the knowledge base in your city, if you let this go any further, you need to promote education to replace those critical infrastructure staff members and be mindful of that. 8235 is a vehicle. Your youth commission, I would encourage you, Mayor, seriously, because Massachusetts, sir, has a law that they get engaged in the community. It's happening, and I've talked to our legislators, and they're all excited about it. Your school district, Garden Grove, is changing. Now they require coordinate superintendents. Each school and principal require students and civics to write a letter to Mr. Jones or Chris Beard, whoever, and they'll learn government. We need to engage our community and have a youth commission, sir. We need to have activities to bring our youth in terms of involvement of the community, like, for example, a bicycle is no longer just a bicycle, it's an electrical bicycle. They need to know ohms, and as John, as the electrician knows, these are skills and mechanically aptitude. According to Long Beach Career Expert in CTE from Mac East, he says they take that and transfer gear ratios to other jobs. It's math. You need to engage your community. Garden Grove has not engaged in legislation and right to your government agencies. It's been expecting your staff to do it, and you don't have staff. So you have to start engaging the community and get youth involved and start building your new infrastructure of your community. If you, Mayor, if you're serious about getting your bike plan for Wright Street to Garden Grove, you don't have any bicycle clubs in Garden Grove that want to come to your city. I've talked to these boys in Orange County. You're going to have to create your own widget and start developing a marathon, like they do with Tustin. Every year, it's been a dinosaur dash, and there are tons of people. You start doing that, culture change, and the youth, and you're going to have something new and fresh. But you're relying on people to come into Garden Grove. They don't want to come to Garden Grove. I've talked to them. They'd rather go to Irvine some metal or something. They don't want to come to Garden Grove. You're going to have to go with the idea, you have to create your own platform, and then invite others as a mix, if you want to bring downtown Main Street. You need to get a bicycle co-op. You need to get a hair salon petition going and do what they did in Texas, they do in Massachusetts, they're rocking, and Garden Grove School District and the board is willing to work with you. I have got them at my ability to listen and make suggestions, and they're doing it. And if you get involved and have a resolution, a Vision Zero, a resolution for Safe Around the School, Palo Alto does as a partnership, start doing these things, and then expect your council staff to do your work for you. You need to have legislation, writing letters, so you can get the funds that you need to support your police department in terms of Safe Around the School. Orange County, sir, Mayor, you know Paul Martin? Okay, he gave me the word awesome, my white paper, to Lisa Bartlett, and now is in her office for the traffic there for whole Orange County, Safe Around the School. You need to get the city Garden Grove on fire, and you're the leader of this, and I've been the leader of this, and you've got problems with the city. Until you engage the city, seriously, staff can't do it by themselves anymore. You've trimmed them down to nothing. Thank you. Put on the agenda.
Thank you. That's all the cards I have, so we will conclude oral communications.
Mr. Mayor, a point of personal privilege, since my name was brought up, I want to thank, I want to thank Maureen. Maureen, are you out there? Thank you for those kind words, and likewise, thanks for your involvement and all your efforts that you do for the city and all the groups that you work on behalf of, so thank you.
We'll move on to written communications. We do have one request from West Garden Grove Youth Baseball.
Go ahead.
3A.
Item 3A is a written request from West Garden Grove Youth Baseball for cosponsorship of the 2019 Opening Day Parade, and Ms. Palio is here to give the report.
Alright, good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. The West Garden Grove Youth Baseball Organization is requesting City Council approval for cosponsorship of the year opening day parade on Saturday, February 23rd, 2019. The West Garden Grove Youth Baseball is a 501(c)(3) organization that is in good standing, and more than 50% of their participants are Garden Grove residents. Each year, the organization holds an opening day parade that includes baseball players and softball players in Garden Grove, the Garden Grove School District, school board, and school officials, Miss Garden Grove Court, and the local fire department and City Council. Cosponsorship for the 2019 Opening Day Parade will have an impact on the city's general fund. The cost to provide police staff required to close the city streets, the rental of the Showmobile stage, and staff to set up the stage is approximately a total cost of $2,800. The organization has committed to reimburse the city 5% of the total cost for city support, which for this event would be a total amount of $140. It is recommended the City Council consider the request from West Garden Grove Youth Baseball for cosponsorship of their opening day parade, and staff is available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Janet. Any questions? Comments, motion? What was the motion?
Do they want to come up, or any representatives?
I'm not sure if they're here. They were invited to.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, they are here.
Oh, there they are.
I don't see them. Are you in the back?
You don't need to come up, but you're welcome to if you like.
Just wanted to recognize you and thank you for being a part of our community.
Wonderful organization. There they are.
There you go.
Alright. Cool. Thanks for coming out, guys, tonight to be here. Do we have a motion to move on? Move the motion?
Second.
Call the vote.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
We're honored to support West Garden Grove Youth Baseball. Thank you. Okay, that's all the communications, so we will recess to other legislative bodies. Going to successor agency. Madam Clerk, would you like to call roll?
Member Beard?
Here.
Member O'Neal?
Here.
Member T. Nguyen?
Here.
Member Cloughenstein?
Here.
Member Kay Nguyen?
Here.
Vice Chair Bowie?
Yeah.
And Chair Jones?
Here.
We already did oral communications simultaneously with the City Council and other bodies, so consent items, we just have two, receive and file, and approval of the warrants. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Call the vote.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
Any matters from agency members? Seeing none, we will adjourn to sanitary district.
Okay, with that, could I ask this? Madam Clerk, the call roll, please.
Member Bowie?
Here.
Member Jones?
Here.
Member Cloughenstein?
Here.
Member Kim Nguyen?
Here.
Member T. Nguyen?
Here.
Vice President O'Neal?
Here.
And President Beard?
Here. And so we've already covered oral communication with the other legislative bodies, so we have consent items, which is two, the minutes, and approval of the warrants.
Certainty of motion. Move it.
Second.
Motion is second. Call for the vote.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
Okay, any matters from members or the general manager? Seeing none, our director will adjourn back to City Council.
Alrighty. We will reconvene City Council and move on to consent items. It's recommended that 4A through 4J be acted on simultaneously unless anyone would like to pull an item?
I would like to pull 4E and 4G.
Did you say 4E and what?
4G.
Okay.
And I would like to pull 4H. It's 4H.
Okay. Shall we get a motion for the ballots?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, call the vote on all the rest.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
Alright, 4E is pulled by Councilmember Kim Nguyen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, City Council is being asked to award a contract to Foster Morrison Consulting. Tonight, City Council is being asked to award a contract to Foster Morrison Consulting to develop a hazard mitigation plan for the city. The plan is required per the Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000 and is required to obtain FEMA disaster mitigation funding. Last summer, the city competed for and was awarded a grant in the amount of $75,000 to help pay for the preparation of this hazard mitigation plan. The grant will require $25,000 in matching funds, which will be paid out of the Water Enterprise Fund. In late August, the city issued a request for proposals to prepare the plan. Five proposals were received on October 1st. The proposals were evaluated to determine the most qualified candidate and Foster Morrison Consultant was ranked the highest. The cost of the plan is $99,400, which will be paid for using $74,400 of the grant funds and $25,000 of the Water Enterprise Fund. Staff recommends awarding the contract to Foster Morrison Consulting for a fixed price of $94,400 and to authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. This concludes staff's report, and I'm available should you have any questions.
I really only pulled this item and the other one as it pertained to grant fundings, and at previous meetings I had highlighted to staff that I'd like to see a consolidated document on a quarterly, if not, you know, semi-annually basis to kind of highlight efforts from our staff to apply for grants, receive the grants, and how they use the grant funding so that we can highlight that to our residents, because I think it's extremely important. So I motion to approve four E.
A couple of questions.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, a question related to, the act was, 2000, the act came out. Have we had a plan since then?
We were under the kind of branch of OCWD. They went out and did kind of a big one, which loosely applied to us. This one will specifically apply to us, and we think it'll be a good.
Okay. Does it principally apply to water?
Water is the largest concern.
Okay. And it also mentions something in the scope of work about a task force and organizing and informing the public and outreach. Do you do that under, under Public Works, the water department?
Um.
Or does a consultant do that in a series of meetings?
It's going to be led by the consultant.
Yeah, I just want to make the public aware that this may be coming forward, you could be a part of it, so look for any announcements or notices to be a part. Because this is an important plan.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Definitely.
End of my questions, thanks.
Thanks. I think we have a motion in a second. Call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All right, four G, as pulled by Kim Nguyen. I don't know if you need an actual staff report, right, or you just want to comment?
I have to wait for you to give this.
You do. Okay, go for it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, City Council is being asked to award a contract to National Auto Fleet Group to purchase four electric sedans. The vehicles were competitively bid via the Sourcewell Program and will total $153,000, actually, $153,501.16. In February of this year, the council approved our partnership with a Mobile Source Air Pollution Reduction Review Committee, which made the city eligible to receive up to $40,000 in matching grant funds, which will be used to help purchase these vehicles. The remainder of the funds will be charged to the Vehicle Maintenance Fund and will not impact the general fund. Staff recommends council authorize a purchase order in the amount $153,501.16 to purchase four electric sedans from the National Auto Fleet Group. This concludes staff's report, and I'm available should you have any questions.
I have some questions.
Go first.
Sorry.
Go for it.
Yeah, do we have any electric vehicles now?
No. Well, we have a golf cart.
So are they, are they completely electric or are they?
Yes, they're the, I believe it's a Chevy Bolt.
And who's going to, are they already assigned to people or?
Yes, we're going to install the chargers at the, at the yard. They will only be available to the, to these vehicles and the, basically the vehicles will be assigned to Public Works staff. One in the Streets Department, two for the Water Department, and one for the Public Works Administration. That's my secretarial staff.
Any questions? Thank you.
Again, just wanting to highlight, Public Works does a great job in looking for new innovative ways to save money for the city and also applying for grants and using that money to benefit the city. So I motion to approve four H.
Call the vote.
I'm sorry, who is the second?
I did.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All righty, we're on to public hearings.
I pulled four H.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, four H.
Yeah, I pulled it because in the minutes, I wanted to reflect on item, the last item related to the discussion on the fire authority and fire services as requested. I wanted to note, if I may, to add that I wanted to note my concerns over the fees being passed on to businesses by the fire authority as a full recovery measuring, measure. I wanted to note the concerns over the differences in the various cost analysis that we had, and I wanted to express my concern over the risk of the uncertainty of the increase, potential increase to the, to cities, cash cities if it's pulled out, if they pull out, and the overhead costs increases for those remaining cities, so. Mr. City Attorney, am I allowed to add those? Those are general comments I made at the meeting.
Yeah, my recommendation is that the council continue this matter so we can make the revisions and put it back on the agenda at your next meeting.
Okay. Do we need a motion to continue?
Uh, no, you just don't take any action and we got, we got comments by Mayor Bertin Beard and we'll address him and summary of the minutes for, for this meeting, I mean the last meeting, put it back on the agenda for next meeting.
Okay. Sounds good. Then we will move on to public hearings, item five A.
Item five A is an adoption of a resolution establishing and amending fees charged for the security fee at the Community Meeting Center, Courtyard Center, and Senior Center, rental of the West Haven Park Building, and the revision of fees related to city services. And Ms. Palio is here to give the report.
Good evening again, Mayor and members of the City Council. Staff requested that the City Council hold a public hearing to consider the adoption of a resolution establishing and amending user fees charged for the security fee at the Community Meeting Center, Courtyard Center, and Senior Center, and a rental fee for the West Haven Park Building. These two city services are offered by Community Services Department. The proposed fee revisions are needed to offset new and increased costs to the city. A schedule was provided that includes a list of the proposed changes. A fee adjustment for the security fee at the Community Meeting Center, Senior Center, and Courtyard Center is requested as the contracted security company has increased the hourly rate for services. The current hourly fee is derived from the city's administrative overhead plus the cost of the contracted security personnel at 1,880 per hour. In October of 2017, the security services cost increased to 1,990 per hour, and effective in January of 2019, the security service cost will increase to $22.95 per hour. Staff is proposing to increase its hourly fees by $4 to recover the increased cost for services. The city recently built a new community building at West Haven Park. The previous building at this park location was not a rental facility due to programming offered at the site. The new building will now be available for rental to the community. Currently, there are two other rental buildings in the fee schedule, Magnolia Park and West Grove Park. The Class II rental rate for these facilities is $20 an hour with capacity of 40 people. The West Haven Park Building has a capacity of 84 people. When calculating the proposed rate of $50 per hour, staff considered the cost for the other facilities being $20 an hour for 40 people, then broke that down to equal 50 cents per person. That, then staff then calculated the new facility capacity of 84 by 50 cents, that provided a total of $42. In addition to the cost per person, staff also considers the total cost to build and purchase equipment for the new facility, as well as the anticipated, anticipated minimum wage increase. Additionally, staff used the difference in the fee amount for classification three and four for the two park buildings to determine the proposed fee for these classifications for the West Haven Park Building. The proposed new fee will offset the cost of equipment, maintenance, and staffing. The municipal code requires a public hearing for the establishment and amendment of user fees. A public hearing notice was published in the Orange County News on Thursday, November 14th, meeting the 10-day noticing requirement. The proposed fee changes and documentation were made available for the 10-day period, public review period, at the city clerk's office. If approved, the new fees will become effective January 1st, 2019. It is recommended that the City Council conduct a public hearing and adopt the resolution establishing and amending user fees for city services. This concludes staff's report, and I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions to staff? Seeing none, we will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on item five A? We have no cards. Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Colleagues?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Okay, item five B.
Mayor, members of the City Council, the property owner of this property is a client of my firm, so I have to recuse myself.
Item five B is an introduction in first reading of an ordinance approving an amendment to Plan Unit Development Number PUD 10376 entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove Approving Planned Unit Development Number PUD 10376, Revised 2018, Amending Plan Unit Development Number PUD 10376 to Allow Professional Office Uses Within the Industry Subdistrict Area 4 for Parcels Located with Assessors' Parcel Numbers 13102126, 27, 28, 33, 35, 36, 37, 38, 39, 44, 47, and 49, and 13133136 and 40, 13165103, 04, 06, 08, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 25, 26, 27, 28, 32, 36, 37, and 38, and 93675131 through 52." And Ms. Medrano is here to give the report.
Should we say hike after that?
Could you repeat those real quick? I didn't catch.
Yeah, I've got this memorized.
Mary, all yours.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. The item before you tonight is a recommendation from the Planning Commission that the City Council introduce and conduct the first reading of an ordinance approving planning, planned unit development number PUD-103-76, Revised 2018, to amend the permitted uses within the industry subdistrict Area 4 to allow professional office uses. PUD 10376, also known as the Irvine Industrial Complex, was established in 1976 to allow the development of industrial, commercial, multi-tenant industrial, and general light industrial buildings. The PUD is approximately 212 acres and is located on the east side of Knott Street, west of Western Avenue, south of the Stanton Storm Channel, and north of Chapman Avenue, as shown in the maps before you. The PUD was designed with a mix of subdistricts to accommodate four land uses, which are industrial, commercial, and area one, multi-tenant industry in area two, special industry in area three, and industry in area four. The PUD is intended to allow for industrial uses in all four subdistricts, such as research and development, manufacturing, and warehouse and distribution. The industrial, commercial, area one also allows for commercial uses, including business and professional offices, and commercial activities to support the industrial park, such as beauty shops, branch banks, health clubs, and professional offices. The applicant is Southland Industries, which currently owns a property approved with a two-story, 37,879-square-foot building located within Area 4 at 7390 Lincoln Way. Southland Industries is a construction engineering company that was approved to occupy the building in 2011 as a construction industry use, which is a permitted use in Area 4. The overall configuration of the existing property and building was designed to accommodate a professional office use, as shown in the site plan before you. The building was parked at an office professional rate of one parking space per 250 square feet of gross floor building area. Southland Industries recently relocated their operation to 12131 Western Avenue to consolidate their operation into one location. The applicant proposes to sell the property as a professional office building to a mortgage company that is currently in escrow. Area 4 of the PUD does not allow businesses that are entirely professional office. Therefore, the applicant is requesting to amend Area 4 to allow professional office uses. On November 1st, 2018, the Planning Commission held a public hearing to consider the proposed amendment to the PUD. At the hearing, no one spoke in favor or in opposition. The Planning Commission voted six to zero with one commissioner absent to adopt the resolution recommending that the City Council adopt the amendment to the PUD. The amendment to PUD 10376 will modify the permitted uses to introduce and allow professional offices excluding medical office and health support services in the industry subdistrict Area 4 only. Staff's review of the applicant's request finds that professional office uses would be inappropriate and compatible use in Area 4, as several properties within this area are designed to accommodate professional office uses. Currently, there is also a trend and growing demand for professional office uses to occupy industrial buildings due to the larger building footprint. In addition, the PUD was developed to allow a mix of commercial and industrial subdistricts. Furthermore, the PUD was designed with adequate vehicular circulation and access that can accommodate professional office uses without impacting existing street design. Therefore, staff recommends that the City Council conduct a public hearing and introduce and conduct the first reading of the attached ordinance approving an amendment to PUD Number 10376, Revised 2018. This concludes staff's presentation, and we are available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Any questions?
If we change this to office only, professional office only, entire thing, do we need to concern with the negative impact to general industrial usage?
The proposed PUD amendment would only apply to one of the areas of this PUD. It's not going to impact other industrial zones in the city. It's just this area, and it's only Area 4, so it would be this light gray area. These buildings, some of them have been designed as office, general office buildings, and so they can accommodate those types of uses. We will also verify that there is sufficient parking for an office use before that they can occupy one of these buildings.
I'm very certain that we, you know, staff would probably have checked the required parkings, and that is not my, my concern when I ask that question. So let me try to rephrase it. Throughout our general plan, we designate some area for industrial use, certain area for retail and other for professional offices, and certain area for educational institution, because we want to have a balanced use of our lands. So if we take away this, I don't, I'm not sure how many thousand square feet this is, let's say 40,000 square feet, that would make 40,000 square feet less in industrial zoning available for other industrial use. So are we, are we accommodate, accommodate that somewhere else, or how do we do this?
So, so this particular proposal, because this is a PUD, it will not have the, a global effect like if we change the industrial zones to allow offices. That would be a global effect through all the industrial zones. This particular PUD has, it's really a mixed commercial-industrial PUD. In order for them to do any type of offices, they'd have to meet the parking requirements. A lot of these buildings that are out there, it'd be very difficult to do that. The ones on Lincoln Way where this particular site is located, the, we've had requests from the property owners to, on the north side of Lincoln, because their properties also, they have buildings that are full of offices and they meet the parking requirements. I don't really think in this particular situation... I don't really think in this particular situation it would have that major of an impact, partly because it's not a global impact throughout all the industrial zones. Only, whoops, excuse me. It's only within that one section.
What I am not clear about is, let's just say, another business want to set up a industrial use facility in that area.
Right.
And now we have less industrial use in the, not, in that area.
Right.
Because now it is being dedicated 100% of that area of this building to professional use only. So meaning some business in the future that want to come in here and set up an industrial use, they would have less space in order to accommodate them.
Well, they'd still be able to, we're not taking away any industri, the potential for any of them remaining industrial or a new industrial use coming in. This is just adding another layer of uses that would be allowed in buildings that are already developed for office uses. Now, I think we're seeing a trend, and Lisa, you may, could pop in too, that in certain areas, there's a trend for these industrial buildings like this to transition into offices when they've already been developed as such. I don't think that we're going to have a huge impact on this particular PUD with the loss of industrial space out there.
If some business want to come in and set up a, you know, industrial-type business in Garden Grove, will we have enough space to accommodate them, or we are facing less when we do this?
If I may.
That's what I'm not clear about.
Right.
And I think you didn't answer my question. You answered more in terms of this building is equipped to be operated as professional use. I'm not concerned with that. I'm sure staff have done, you know, diligent work to make sure that they have, the building is up to go for that type of use, and the parking is available. I'm more concerned about if some other industrial, we want to encourage some other industry to come into that area to set up facilities there, do we have enough room now that we're taking, you know, some sizable, you know, footage toward professional use?
If I may answer Councilman Bowie. Our industrial area is one of the more successful, certainly prominent, business attraction areas. We have about 11 million square feet of industrial space, so there is, and we have a 2% vacancy. So we are a popular place in which manufacturing and industrial businesses are looking to locate. So I want to acknowledge that and certainly agree that it is in high demand. The second point is, it's a mix of industrial manufacturing. We were, this particular office location that is requesting the BUD amendment was previously home to Southland Industries. They were a large international company that based their corporate offices in Garden Grove and relocated to a larger facility in Garden Grove that not only houses their corporate offices, but also their manufacturing operation. So what we've seen successful is, the industrial area also supports office uses that are home to corporate manufacturers as well. So it's a good combination of all the above. You want to make sure you have a mix of uses that's dynamic enough that would accommodate the industrial needs that is existing today. So I do want to acknowledge that in this particular case, adding the request before you this evening is continuing the general office that adds an employment opportunity in Garden Grove. So it actually only adds additional complementary amenities to our business community, so I hope that answers your question in terms of, does it impact? The manufacturing community is evolving. A lot of folks are manufacturing their products overseas and assembling it locally, so their needs for a larger warehouse may be different over time. But in this particular case, it's predominant general office for this particular area.
So can you tell me, right now we have about 2% vacancy in the industrial zone. How much square footage would that be comparing to this building? I'm trying to get a sense in terms of mitigating risk about whether we have the capacity to welcome other industrial, you know, business into our town.
So we have a total 11 million square feet of industrial space in our industrial area. This particular building is roughly about 38,000 square feet, so less than 1%.
Less than 1%. Okay, so the worst case is we will probably look at 3% deficiency. Okay, no more questions?
Thank you. I'll take you. Hold it. Hey, I'd like to ask a question while Mayor's getting hooked up. Are you hooked up? With the, I'm looking at the floor plans here. Are those the proposed floor plans or the existing floor plans for the building?
Those are the existing floor plans.
Okay, so, and I see no manufacturing space in the building right now.
No, because they were a mechanical contractor.
Oh.
So, yeah. So they actually, the way they used their space, they fell underneath the contracting land use designation, but they were, most of their work was office, in an office space.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions of staff? I believe this is a public hearing, correct? Okay, so we'll open up the public hearing. Any, anyone like to speak on this item? Are you? Okay, come on up, tell.
I have a question about parking spaces. How many parking spaces are there right now at this, at this location?
It does meet the parking requirement of one per 250 square feet of gross floor area, which is the parking rate for a general office.
Well, I'm not too sure the code on a building. I do know that the code for a restaurant is one space for every 100 square, physical square feet. I know that a movie theater is .3 seats, .3 seats per space. So I'm not too sure what exactly is a professional building code, but I think one in every 250 square feet is pretty low. So I'm not too sure when the code changed in Garden Grove on parking spaces, but I suggest that somebody looks at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public hearing.
Yeah, we did some quick calculations here. We figure at 250, at 38,000 square feet, 150, yeah, thank you. Okay, we're in agreement here. And so you're saying it does have 152.
They have a surplus of one, actually.
Yeah.
Okay, well, good for them. Well, I think, just to.
And I presume, and general office is sort of.
Yeah, general office is one.
Less parking than medical use, which is why the exclusion for medical use and that stuff was contemplated in there. So it looks like you guys did your homework on this and.
Because it meets the parking requirements per code for an office, which is one space per 250 square feet.
Yeah, and a quick perusal of the floor plan, looks like they don't even have 152 offices, so that's, I think it'll accommodate that. May I make a comment?
Please.
Yeah, first of all, thank you for educating the public about that area. 111 million square feet and a 2% vacancy factor.
Not 11 million. Wait.
11 million? 11 million square feet for all industrial area.
Great location, accessible. I sound like a real estate agent, but it really is a great location and money, well-kept up area too as well. So, and I think this is a great reuse of the, it's not really a reuse, it's like an office used continuing to go on. So for that isolated area, I understand your concerns too. We don't want to lose any more light manufacturing or manufacturing, so this works out in this instance pretty good, so I'm very supportive of it.
And Mr. Mayor, to the councilmen's comments, I think what we've seen over the, you know, last few years, we've seen a lot of investment into the industrial area. It's only got a 2% vacancy rate, so I think we've all been to a number of ribbon cuttings and other things where industrial manufacturers and commercial operations in that area are reinvesting in our industrial park and making significant improvements in sometimes, you know, quite cutting-edge, high-tech improvements. I, the mayor and I, and some of the staff, we were at one of our enterprises recently, and they make all of the transparencies for some of our fighter jets and other things. So it's really, we've seen some of the stuff at San Goban with Tesla and other things that they're doing, so the whole industrial park has a number of businesses like that doing really, really interesting things, so.
Yeah, I have, I have no problem of supporting this, but like I mentioned, I want to point out that if we currently have only 2% vacancy in our industrial zone, and this one, 30,000 square feet, is equivalent to 1%, that mean we only have 30,000 square feet available, right? I'm taking that as 2% available, and now we're taking away 1%. We only have 30,000 square feet of industrial zone available for other business to come in and set business in our town. Over the last 12 months, I received a couple inquiries. It's nothing materialized, but some business are interested in set up manufacturing of cabinet, kitchen cabinet in our city. I just want to make sure that we are, you know, taking away potential opportunity for other light industrial in our city. And I don't mind supporting this, but just want to make sure that we are aware of it.
I'd just like to make a comment, or what I like about it is it doesn't preclude going back to an industrial area if it was vacated, someone could develop it. So it's just adding an amendment to it, so it could be used that way. Number two, I like that they're not asking for a variance on parking spots, so we're not, we're not doing anything out of the normal that anybody else would get, so they're not asking for a variance on that. Number three, I know that in these kinds of industries, being an electrical guy and knowing Southland for, is like a 100-year-old company, I think, or they've been around a long time, but the, the models kind of changed. You know, back in the old days in Garden Grove, 50, 60, 70s, the manufacturing, it was a very small office space, and you had a very large manufacturing. In today's world of high tech, you've got a lot of office support and engineers and people that are working right alongside that area where you have your space that's actually manufacturing. So to have that ability, to have that extra office space, I think is only going to enhance our industrial area, which I've always been focused on that, you know, even though we have a high, a low vacancy rate, you know, it always seemed like, ah, we could do a little bit more there, you know. Every once in a while, you drive through there and there's an empty building or something. Maybe it could be empty for a shorter period of time with this, with this amendment, so I'm in favor of it, and I'll make a motion to approve it if, if and when.
Please, yeah. Could I, could I make one more, other comment for staff?
Okay.
One comment for staff. About two years ago, I went to a grand opening of a very successful business. They grow so fast, and at that time, it's a whole earth manufacturing company that manufacture whole earth produce. They was in Garden Grove, and they grow so successfully that they would like, they're looking for space to expand. And when they asked our former city manager and former, you know, economic planning development manager, we did not act quick enough. So they moved to Cypress. Just want to make sure that, you know, be, be, be on the lookout, because even though we do not, we did not exclude industrial use, but once it is being rented to a mortgage business, that means 30,000 square foot being no longer available for, for light or, you know, medium industrial use. Just want everyone to be aware of it. And so staff will need to think about, you know, as we approve this, staff will need to think about what if, you know, some, some business come into town and ask for 40,000 square feet, that we have a plan B to, to meet that demand, because I do not want to lose other industrial business, because they have been successful and they grow out, we don't have any room to accommodate them, or being, losing the opportunity to welcome other manufacturing business set, set foot in our town.
Good point. Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Call the vote.
I'm sorry, who was the second?
I was the second.
We have power?
Yep.
Cool. Motion received, seven yes votes.
Okay, moving on to six items for consideration. We have one listed, item 6A.
Item 6A is award a contract to Parkwood Landscape Maintenance in response to RFP Number S 1238A to provide landscape maintenance services at city parks, medians, frontages, and well sites. And Mr. Murray is here to give the report.
Thank you, Ms. Palmeroy, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight's city council is being asked to award a contract to Parkwood Landscape Maintenance for landscape maintenance services at city parks, medians, and other city maintained areas as needed. The city has a current landscape maintenance contract that expired on November 1st. This new contract will replace the old one and provide the same services. On September 14th, the city issued a request for proposal, and on September 27th, received six proposals. The proposals were evaluated, determined the most qualified candidate, and Parkwood Landscape Maintenance ranked the highest. The not-to-exceed cost for the contract is $821,250 and is valid for the next four years and seven months, which is the remainder of this fiscal year. The funding for the remainder of this fiscal year is included in the current Public Works budget, and the costs for the remaining years are planned to be included in future budgets. Should the council award the contract work, contract tonight, work can begin early next year. Staff recommends the award of the contract to Parkwood Landscape Maintenance and to authorize the city manager to execute the attached agreement. This concludes staff's report, and I'm available should you have any questions.
Any questions, staff?
Just a quick question, just a breakdown would be, it's basically a little over $200,000 a year, for years, 800,000?
Yeah.
And it's medians only that is designated here. We have other landscaping contracts with other companies for other trees and.
Yeah, we tend to move them around as we need them, but for the most part, yeah.
Could we go back to any of these other contractors if they don't provide, or we need additional services, or how does that work?
We do have an additional one on board right now, plus we also have our city crews.
Yeah, okay.
So between the, between those three, we're almost able to meet all of our needs.
Yeah, okay, well, good. Good, good, because you do, they do a fine job of keeping them up. It's a lot of work, a lot of medians, and so just want to make sure we have the capabilities and resources to take care of it, and it sounds like we do, so. Any questions? Thank you.
I have a quick question, Bill. So Parkwood's a very large company. I'd like to see if we could get a report back in six or seven months on how they're doing. I'm anxious to see if there's any improvements or better than the previous company, or, you know, so if we can just get a report back in six months or so.
Sure.
Make sure they're, they're doing what they're supposed to be doing and seeing how things are looking. If we need to make any changes to improve any of our medians and have them do any type of work, you know, that's, that's all I wanted.
Certainly.
Thank you.
I'll make the motion.
Take it.
Call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Okay, moving on to you, seven. Items, ordinances presented for second reading and adoption, 7A.
Item 7A is second reading of ordinance number 2895 entitled "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove Approving Planned Unit Development Number PUD 10473 Revised 2018, amending the uses permitted on a portion of Planned Unit Development Number PUD 10473 to facilitate development of an automatic car wash, a drive-through pad restaurant, and a sit-down restaurant on the parcels located at 12101 and 12111 Valley View Street, and amending the sign requirements of the PUD.
Can I make the motion?
Please.
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes. 7B is second reading of ordinance number 2896 entitled "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove Revising Section 52830 of Chapter 528 of Title V of the Garden Grove Municipal Code." Grove Municipal Code, changing the due date for submission of applications for temporary fireworks stand permits.
Okay. Any questions, comments, motion?
Second.
Call the vote.
Okay. Motion received, seven yes votes.
7C.
Item 7C is second reading of ordinance number 2897 entitled An Initiative Ordinance of the People of the City of Garden Grove Adding Chapter 39 to Title 3 of the Garden Grove Municipal Code, imposing a transactions and use sales tax to be administered by the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, motion?
Second.
Call the vote.
Okay. Motion received, seven yes votes.
Great, okay, that concludes our business items. Any matters from council members? Mayor Proten.
Well, I hope everybody had a great Thanksgiving. I know I did, and giving thanks and appreciation for all my blessings and all that we have, and our, our hearts go out to those people in distress in these times as well to give some thought to them. So, moving forward, I have an item of business. Since our last council meeting, we had talked about the fire issue, and I wanted to bring up something that, we received the, an analysis at the, at the meeting that night, and I didn't get really a chance to look it over. And the reason why I bring that up is, I think there was an error, potentially an error or overinflation of certain numbers in the sensitivity analysis. So I would like to make a motion that we agendize this matter one more time to review certain information related to spreadsheets, and I think the person that should be doing that, I'm, I'm aware that we have a contract employee who's the, serving as a fiscal or the financial services director, I think, and he's from Management Partners. I said that at a previous meeting that it would be good to have a third-party validation, neutral sort of review of, of a lot of this information. I made my comments about the minutes because I want it reflected that there was such a disparate, a wide gap between the different analysis. Like, we, we received the sensitivity analysis, I think it was added percentages that really extended it beyond. I think we need a new set of independent eyes to review that. So as a actionable item, I'd like to place that on the agenda for the next council meeting, and it has that the Management Partners employee review that using expertise and such. So we, also in the meeting, this is not a discussion point, so I'll just leave it at that to place on the agenda as an actionable item.
Okay, in order to be an actionable item, it needs to be awarded on by the city council. We need a majority vote.
And that's the motion I'm making.
I'll second it.
For discussion, I feel like we, I personally feel like we exhausted that, like we, we actually did have.
City attorney, is that a discussable item?
Yeah, it's, it's up for discussion, because you need a majority vote to put it on the agenda, so yes, it's, it's an item.
Yeah, please, let me hear your comments.
I mean, we did have, we, we, over the last, whatever, six or eight months, we contemplated a whole range of different inputs from different groups, including from Management Partners, which was their projected budget, which was one whole fact. I mean, they, they did an exhaustive sort of look at what they projected our fire budget to be.
They did, but they had responses.
Relative to what the city said, so I don't know, I mean, I don't know what else you expect to get out of.
I'll, I'll talk to that, just, just a couple of things. They did the analysis, Management Partners, they use, I think they included the attorney's amounts in that budget, so that was an inaccurate figure at that time, a since-updated review by staff. At the, really, literally, almost at the 11th hour, we received the sensitivity analysis, which added a four, or a one to 5% increases, but we also, and looking at over-the-line items, which I had time to do after the meeting, it had, it reflected a labor rate increase of that, so it's adding another additional amount into a factor that's already been included. So I think we need further analysis on that particular item, because it substantially changes the whole format to where it's gone from, and, and I hear, I think it was misquoted when people were saying it's a $27,000 a year increase. That's, I think that's a, a mistake. So I, just through omissions or errors or things like that, we could have another review of those items.
I would like to add, is it possible to amend that motion? Because I think, at the last meeting, I made it very clear, I, I think I said all I needed to say, so I don't, I won't repeat myself again here now, but I specifically wanted a contingency plan, and what I meant by that was, I wanted to see what negotiations with our current fire department would look like, and I voted yes with the idea that that was the case, and it was my error for not asking for clarification on that motion, and voting yes without asking for that. So I think what we're looking for from the third party is to give us a staff, not, a third-party recommendation on whether or not going to OCFA is the right move or not. I don't think we've gotten a yes or a no from our staff, so to get that from a third party would be ideal, but I think our contract with the fire department is expired. I think it behooves us to have a contingency plan in case we don't go to OCFA, because we've only approved to move forward with negotiations, not to say that we are going with them. So I think in the event that we get to that point, I want to see what it would look like to stay as Garden Grove, not in the current conditions that we currently operate under, but in the conditions in which would put us at a better spot, and then compare that to OCFA.
And added to that, I don't think we got a full cost, I, I don't remember hearing about the development deploying of the city itself. If we went to that model, I never heard a number like, it'll cost this much more, this or that. So I think there's some outstanding questions. I know there's been a lot of analysis, but there's been a lot of numbers going back and forth. So, because what it really comes down to is, we still have the same fire stations, we still have the same number of employees, we have the same equipment, but we're potentially paying $1.5 million more a year. So that's what it kind of comes down to. I think it's great, we're all in agreement that we want to improve the services. We definitely want to do that. We want to improve the level of service, but that means putting two paramedics at each station. That's the only real, real difference in this whole analysis, and the cost of that, of doing that is substantial. So I think we need to take a second look and then include other factors as well. So it's not to rehash everything, it's just to look at these critical items and maybe get some definitive, vetted, confirmed, this is what the city believes, that the number's going to be, the cost expense going forward with the fire authority. So that's where I'm coming from on this. And the ultimate thing is we have control. I think if, if the numbers, particular numbers overinflated here, I think it really throws off the whole analysis to where it will cost a lot more, and we're paying a whole lot more, and we could be using that money for other public service or other, other, other areas if we can reduce that down. And they may want to look at full fee recoveries, because that was left out of all the analysis, and that is a critical part of this. This is $750,000 more a year that we're going to pass on to businesses, whether we do it as a city or, or the, or the, or the fire authority does it, that has a bearing and everything that was never included in any analysis. So it's not to keep doing this, but I think we need to look at critical things to really make a definitive, I feel good, I feel confident, this is the number, what is, what, I know, I understand, we, I don't have to get into the safety aspect of, because we all agree with that, but it's the means of how we get there and then the cost of doing it. I think it's still feasible, if these numbers change, that it would be better to, for us to reconsider having it in-house and not moving it to another entity.
And I think looking at it as a side-by-side, as a plan A and as a plan B, and I think that if we don't do that, we're not doing our, our due diligence.
I feel like our due diligence was already met to some degree, and I feel like, with all due respect to my colleagues, a lot of these questions, I feel like, why weren't they brought up at that time, at that night? I don't understand where they're coming from.
Again, again, I had, it was the 11th hour, I, I just got this, and in looking through it, I see a 4.5% increase on the cost comparisons of this analysis, and then I looked at, and then another additional percentage was added to that. So again, not to debate this here, I think the question at hand is, put it on a, a future council meeting, preferably the next, to answer these questions immediately, we can get some quick answers, and hopefully our financial in-house consultant could give us some bias, unbiased.
Well, customer, mayor and customer, but I, I sit here and felt like we are being lost here. We had a long deliberation on this, on this proposal for many, many months, and at last council meeting, we have a very long deliberation, we heard argument from all three sides, from staff, from the fire association, from OCFA, and we deliberate a lot, you know, we spent most of the last council to deliberate on this.
Yeah.
And we had, listen, let me finish first.
I'm listening.
And we had a 6-1 vote. So to, for me, unless there is a major, major flaw, which you have an outline for me to see, or we have a very major outcry from the resident, we should not bring something that we already voted on. Now, you, if I heard correctly, you mentioned earlier that certainly you see a duplicate in term of staff salary, was that correct? That, that, that caused it to be, that caused the cost of staying Garden Grove to be, you know, a little, a little higher? And, and that was surprising you, was that, was that your understanding?
What I saw, and it, you're exactly right, over the months, several months now, the, the review, the analysis has gone on and on and on, and in each spreadsheet, at each time, it said it was a cost of increase of anywhere from $1 to $2 million to go to the fire authority. That never changed until the very last minute, last meeting, and that was last meeting, and that was based on the sensitivity analysis.
Right.
So I think it's worth going over at least that one document to see where we're at, to say, how does that fit?
Okay. So, so let me tell you, go back and watch the video of last meeting again. I assure you that we did, and I myself, we bring that up, the reason why we have to have the sensitivity comparison added to that spreadsheet, and Scott and other city staff have worked with representative from the fire association, working with the fire management, including the fire chief, working with Ann in finance, and working with Scott. And we realized one thing, and, and we did deliberate on that at the previous council meeting, and that is, we cannot compare to the existing salary, because that's already the thing of the history, thing of the past.
But that's already.
And that's why, and that is why they did the sensitivity study, to, to fold that into comparison, because, listen, if we are going to move forward and do it in-house, we are going to have to give fire a race, and so we cannot compare to their past salary. And that's why there is a sensitivity component in this analysis. If, if you think that is the only issue that you have with, then I'm sorry, customer, but that would be the thing that you should bring up at the previous council meeting, you know, you didn't introduce anything new.
Well, I'm introducing it now, because in reviewing this document, I see a 4.5% increase over 10 years on this one analysis, and then it goes to the sensitivity analysis and adds another one to 5% on that top of that.
Then, then go back to the previous video meetings, the video meeting of the previous council meeting, and, and, and try to understand it, because we did discuss that in line.
I understand you.
So I don't understand what the issue is. We're moving forward with OCFA negotiations, what we're asking for is for staff to do a side-by-side negotiation with fire internal, and have our third-party consultant tell us if it's a good idea to go to OCFA or not, or to stay internal. What is the issue here? We're still moving forward with negotiations to OCFA, but now we have a backup plan.
And what's the potential benefit? $30 million, $30 to $50 million over 10 years of salary or cost savings, I should say.
I just thought I'd throw, interject here. So I'm not opposed to look, relooking at the numbers, and I'm sure we will. I wonder if it'd be more appropriate if we did that after we kind of finished our negotiations and had like a bottom line to rehash the numbers when we, you know, I don't know if it's appropriate right now, while we're still with the city manager and the staff is still negotiating on the final deal. I, I mean, I understood, I totally agree, your point that, you know, you want to get those numbers correct, and we have a new financial consultant, so it'd be good to hear other things, but I don't know if it's, I don't want to do that and do it twice. I would rather have a final agreement, and then we can hash out all, we're going to talk about it then, I'm sure, and we can go over the numbers again as much as we want.
So I'm not asking to rehash numbers. We know what they are, we know who inflated and who didn't, and what numbers are real and were not. What I'm asking for is, like, any other project in this city, we are RFP it, right, and see what's the best thing for our buck. We already have RFP going out with OCFA, why can't we ask our internal staff to do the same thing, present us with two contracts, and that's what we vote on? So we see the bottom lines for both. What is it, what is it going to cost having them at medium in the county, and we do this, we do that, whatever, internal GG, versus whatever negotiations Scott and staff work out with OCFA for all the minutia in the contract that's going to take, what, two to four months, given holidays? Why could we not do both?
Are you, are you asking for a side-by-side comparison, or are you asking to put it on to discuss?
I'm asking to RFP.
To deliberate and, and, and vote on it again?
If I can't ask for that now.
Right.
Then I'm asking.
So the, the only issue is whether to agendize it for action, and the action may be to reconsider that motion or to add additional direction to staff.
So could we make the motion to add direction to staff to internally create a contract for us to compare with and provide a third-party consultant to give us their opinion, recommendation as to what we should do, seeing both?
No, so, so no, that, so that's, that would be a possible motion if the item gets on the agenda for action.
So that's, I want that item to be put on the agenda. I'm just clarifying what I want the item to be on the agenda.
That's my motion. Okay.
Second.
I do not see a need for that, because we are not approving a contract with OCFA. All we approved at the previous council is start negotiation, and once we have a final detailed proposal from OCFA, at that time, then we will, the council will, will, will vote to see whether we move to OCFA or not. At the previous city council, all we did was to vote and direct staff to negotiate and find out what are, the contract is, and then we will compare that with, with.
But we don't have anything to compare it to.
I thought that the, I thought that the fire association used Management Partners in their, in their personal analysis, and so the numbers that we had were part of that. I mean, I, I vividly remember those.
And that, and that number was corrected by staff, too, to, to a lower number as well, if you look through the, all the paperwork that came in on it.
The number from management consulting was a lot higher than what we.
Again, let me reiterate, that number was erroneous, put in by Management Partners, and they acknowledged it, too. It also included the attorney's budget, which was not, was just later taken out, so it was reduced down to 24 plus some change, million dollars.
I just want to reiterate.
It wasn't erroneous, it just made certain assumptions about, about the outcomes of labor negotiations, and that's where this thing. That's where this thing crosses over into the necessity for that sensitivity analysis component, was because there were, there was about seven or eight variables that were sort of agreed to disagree between finance department and the fire union when they were.
And again, we are still moving forward with negotiations with OCFA. I don't see what the problem is for staff to do a, a separate one, as if we were going to RFP for any other project in the city.
The, the issue is, I don't think it is needed to do it at this point. You will have that.
What happens when OCFA gives, they come back with negotiations, they present the contract, and we say no? We should have another one to be like.
At that time, at that time, I'm sure we, they will.
But there's not a quick enough turnaround time. I'd rather have both present and pick the better one, like we would in an RFP process.
Customer can win, if two months from now, thing will change again. So you will have to revisit that number again if you do it now, because you're talking about things that can, can, can move.
I'm treating this like an RFP, like you would any other project. You put it out to bid, you look at the bids when you get them, and you vote on the best one.
To me, it's not that simple, though. So I, I, I still agree with you from the last meeting that we should have a backup plan, and we should sort of be comparing this thing, which I trust.
You're not asking for it.
Okay, which I trust what we're doing, but this, but what gets confusing is this thing about, A, hiring an outside consultant to do something that's not incredibly clear.
We do it in-house, we have somebody in-house, that's the benefit. That's the beauty of this whole proposal is, we have somebody internal that can review it independently, and that would be the Management Partners' financial director that we have in place right now, I think it's, Bobby McGee is his name. He's, he's, he's well-qualified, and I think he could do it in a short amount, turnaround time, so he can look at these same numbers and say, you know what, I, I. I, I agree, disagree, here's my recommendation. I mean, what, what is the harm of, what is the prospect of saving millions of dollars over 10 years by additional council meeting to say, let's review these numbers another time? Because I literally received this the night of the council meeting, and I was reviewing it during the council meeting. So, and I think there's some discrepancies here, or some, some, some answers that need to be made. And I think an outside third-party consultant, which this person would be, could do that.
And it's transparency to our residents for them to see.
Yeah, but, but to me, the, the process was very exhaustive. So there was nothing that was like a big surprise at the, at the meeting the last time. It was a, it was a progressive building of numbers that came from staff, from management partners.
Yeah, well, it progressed to the point of having sensitivity analysis. It didn't make sense to me at the time because I couldn't figure it out. And then reading it later, thinking, well, we're overinflated one particular line item, which is going to cost us a million, a million dollars plus each year. So you're saying, we went through the process, we went through the process, we get late information and say, well, you know, we not going to consider that. And there was no consideration of fee studies or fees passed on to businesses. I mean, that was kind of maneuvered around. So there's other things to consider in this. I think we should have a full, or at least somebody with, with, in a neutral position with a financial, heavy financial background, which this person has, to review it and give us his input.
Why wouldn't we vote to have a safety net? I just don't understand.
Yeah, I mean, what was it, I know it's been long and exhaustive, but you know, that's what we signed up for, to review this thing, to do our due diligence, be fiscally responsible, and, you know, find out what, what the situation is. Again, let me go back to this. We have the same number of positions, we have the same number of fire stations, we have the same amount of equipment, and we're going up millions of dollars. And this new analysis at the tail end of our last meeting said, oh, you know, there won't be much, it's a wash. I disagree with that.
Right, right, but that was not a last minute, let me, let me speak for, I'm sorry, cut it, but that was not a last minute thing. There was, like I said, there was the seven or eight variables that were the agree to disagree between the two sides, the finance department and the fire union. They resolved all but a couple of those by consensus. They said, okay, a, an EOC should be 70 grand, not, not 11 grand and not 175 grand. They, they met at a point and they agreed by consensus about all the variables, except for the ones that cross over into opening up the can of worms, which is labor negotiations.
Opening up negotiations, which we, which we-
Which is, which is why the need for the sensitivity analysis.
Okay, if it was 1% to 5%, they had the increase. And so it came down to, again-
And what they asserted was-
That was already included and estimated and figured into the spreadsheet, and then that was added on top of that. So I'm saying, there was a double, doubly inflated number here.
No, it, it's, it's, it's not, it's a matter of kind of context. Staff did not include that because it crosses over to labor negotiations, policy decision.
I will first, I'll be the first to say, hey, you know what? Show me I'm wrong, and I'll say, fine, thank you for showing me. But if I'm right, there was an overinflated number, that's a significant salary, I mean, excuse me, a loss or an extra expense to the city that we don't need to incur. And I did not hear the full amount for a deployment of the city using that model. And the fee structure was never, or the fees passed on to businesses was never a calculation in that. So there's other important, major, major items that a independent, third-party person we have on staff right now can review, and perhaps by the next council meeting or shortly thereafter, can give you, say, you know what? It all checks out, it's great. I'm reassured, I've reassured the council, I've reassured city manager, it looks good to me, fine, so.
And OCFA is still moving forward.
Yeah, yeah.
We're just having the other thing as a safety net.
The contract. But if you want to say, if you want to say, you know, I'm tired of looking at numbers, fine, use that, vote no. Vote no to put on the agenda. Say, I don't want to look at it anymore, I think we've seen enough, and I'm convinced and satisfied, it's not that, it's a wash, and so, you know, all the variables have taken, been taken into consideration. So just vote no on it if you don't want. The motion is to agendize this matter.
Okay.
Not to rehash it all.
With all respect, Councilmember, here we go again. We had a vote six one, six vote yes, and you vote no. So unless there is a major concern, a major flaw, or a major outcry from the public, I wouldn't want to waste, you know, these dais times to, to, to open it up. Hear me out, here's why. We're not here to try to look, reexamine the number and convince you to vote yes because it's, you know what, it's irrelevant. Your vote no to yes doesn't change the outcome. And we, you know, unless the other city council, you think that you can have sufficient information to change all the council member vote, to vote, instead, to change their, the other vote from yes to no, then we should take a look at that. But if you don't think that, that is the case here, then we do not need to, to, to bring this up again.
I'm not looking to change anybody's votes. I'm looking for accurate figures. That's what I'm looking for. I think we can get it validated by an independent source.
I do not see any inaccuracy here. It's only you that see it, and I welcome you to look back.
And I've heard it from many other staff members, people in the community, multiple times. And I would like to have a safety net. I don't understand what the problem is. If we're moving forward with OCFA negotiations, why can't we have a safety net for the city?
Again, if you don't want to move forward with this, fine, vote no on the motion.
It's transparency and safety net for our residents, for the city's staff, and for ourselves, and I don't see why we wouldn't remotely consider that.
May I? I think remember, I remember last time that when we were voting, is we moving forward with the OCFA negotiation? However, I know, I remember Councilwoman, Councilwoman Kim also mentioned she wants contingency. In the back of my head, that's why I believe that we vote for at the same time. And I remember you, Mr. Mayor-
We're not still on path with that.
Right. No.
We're in agreement with that.
We're not, because in your motion, when you made it, at the end of it, you said, but I think it's going to be undue work for staff or something like that. So your motion didn't carry over to include it. I asked the attorney, and that's my clarification, which is why I am supporting Councilmember Beard's motion right now, because I want that contingency plan, that's what I voted for before, and I didn't-
Let, let me also add to some things, okay? We not going back to look at the numbers diagnosed in. We just looking for, I speak for myself, is we looking for the contingency plan.
Different people are saying different things, so I'm not clear on-
You know what? Let me clarify one thing. Let me clarify one thing. We're not asking, not asking you to look at any more numbers. We're asking for an independent review by the person we already have on staff.
But I, I include-
Well, I thought you were looking to go outside, for starters, I thought you were saying hire management partners or something like that.
I'm glad you asked. No, we have somebody in staff right now to take, have a look.
Those number are put together by Ann in the finance department, not by, not by OCFA or by, by other.
And Ann stands by that it's an inflated number and that it's a cost to the city to go.
Let me finish, let me finish, please. Those number was put in by Ann, and it was Ann, the city manager, Mr. Stye, Ann, the chief, the Fire Association, and Stephanie and I had deliberate-
And myself.
deliberate and agree on the eight difference. We knocked out to six or seven that are in agreement by every party involved. And the council, the city council represent at that meeting is more like a referee to make sure that, you know, all three party came to the same agreement. And so I do not understand why we need to ask staff again, because those number and those assumptions have been agreed on, upon through various meeting, at least three of them, that, that they come to the same conclusion that these are the safe assumption, and that everyone on board on that. There is only one assumption that everyone was, was disagreeing. And if that one was not in the calculation, is that right, Mr. Scott Stye?
At this time, I think we're only, the council is discussing whether to agendize it or not, so it's not appropriate to, you know, ask staff questions at this time. It's not on the agenda, so.
I'm, I'm just asking about what have already took place as historical data, not, not about what is going to do in the future. What had happened during the meetings or during the, you know, sessions?
You mean with leading to the last meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that that was already presented to council at that time. I mean, at this time, I think it's appropriate to call a question. Should we agendize it for the next meeting or not?
Could you help finish what you were saying, though?
Sure.
I kind of lost track of my thought now. I just want to make sure that I know Mayor Portman Beard want to reanalyze the number. Am I correct?
Not personally, I want to-
Let, 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 simple context. Correct, back and forth right now is, is, is not, we go nowhere. So you want to re, another setup, fresh eye, look at the number and see if it makes sense. Am I correct?
That is correct, and that would be a staff person who recently hired, who's a consultant contractor who's-
So a fresh set of eyes. Okay. Now, Councilwoman Kim, also want to add that, add on the direct direction for staff to look at the contingency plan as an optional, just in case something we can fall back. Am I correct? Okay. And there is something that we discussed last, last council meeting before we vote, was to have move forward with the, with the OCFA negotiation and the contingency, that's what I heard. At the same time, Mayor, Mr. Mayor also say, I concur as well. And that's what I believe I vote on. Am I correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So I just want to confirm that.
I mean, let me try and clarify that. I, I still concur, as we go forward, this, the direction was to authorize city manager to begin negotiations with OCFA, to bring back a contract for our review at that point in time, and that concurrently, we should be preparing for, if that doesn't work out, that we've got a contingency plan in place of what we would do if we kept the department internally. So I still wholeheartedly agree with that and believe that that's what the direction was that was given, and that's what we're going through.
It wasn't, too.
And to me, I don't think we need to reopen the item or agendize something and dive back into-
Right. And, and I concur with that as well.
Which I feel were exhaustively-
I, I agree with that as well, because nothing in concrete, right? Nothing in concrete. We only approve the city, you know, manager and staff to start negotiation. And we still, it may, and at that time, we may, we did deliberate that, you know, as we move forward with, with negotiation, thing may fall off the, the table. OCFA may decide to say, hey, I do not want to offer the proposal anymore, I want to pull out. And so we have to have a contingency plan for that. Other people make, there's other unforeseeable reason that causing it from finalized. And so we need to have a contingency plan. So I think we are on the same page there. What I think is your, your contingency plan are very different from, from what Councilman Beard is asking, because he's asking to reexamine the number again, which is what I do not understand.
For one, there's mixed signals. So I, I personally don't care to reopen the spreadsheets, which I feel were exhaustively-
Yeah, because there's the potential that there could be an error or a change in the spreadsheet that could be substantially costly to the city in the long run. That's my view. And we have a differing opinion on that, that's fine.
But that's one item separate from having a contingency plan.
I don't think we-
A separate item.
We always, we, all, all of us believe in where there should be a contingency plan, and Ann stop, you know, negotiate with, with OCFA, they have to have, back then, I have to develop the contingency plan. That's different. So, so I do not know what motion we are trying to consider here.
Right.
So, again, back to the last meeting, what I wanted was not the motion, which is why I'm bringing it up now. But I, I do think that regardless, maybe not exactly what Councilmember Beard wants, but regardless, I think we should have the third, third-party present us with the recommendation on the two.
Nobody, that's I don't understand.
Mr. Mayor, maybe if I could just add a couple of comments. One, it was pretty clear to us, we got the direction from council was to move forward with beginning negotiations with OCFA on developing a contract. So just as we heard the Assistant Chief Lori Zeller say, process is going to take a little bit of time, so they are still working on getting a boilerplate contract to us. We don't even have one yet. So it's taking, it's going to take them a little bit of time just to get something together for us. And then, you know, the, through the course of that, that, as you can imagine, we'll be getting, we'll be going through those discussions with them. It will take some time, even Assistant Chief Zeller acknowledged that, but we will work diligently to do that. And at some point in time, we would bring forward a, a development agreement, professional services agreement for the city council to consider. We'd go through it, chapter by chapter, point by point, every item and nuance that would go into it would be included in that. And I would expect that to be a pretty extensive presentation when we get to that point. Now, having said that, I can tell you, just as a staff, we're always going to be developing a contingency plan. We heard some of the comments that were made by the city council in, you know, in your discussions and deliberations two weeks ago. So, you know, we're always thinking about, and we will be thinking about, you know, what would happen if for some reason negotiations didn't go well and all of you decided to, you know, make some different decisions. So we would have to make some decisions. Obviously, you know, we're not going to go out and advertise and do a search for a fire chief right now. So that would be, but it would be something that we would be thinking about in our contingency plan if that didn't change.
That's, yeah.
So, and obviously, we've got, we would normally be in labor negotiations with the, so, you know, we would be thinking about the contingency of doing that.
Those are the two key things, so.
So those, I just wanted to add those two points. If it gives any comfort to anybody on the dais that these are things that we will be thinking about and trying to plan for so that we can maneuver whichever way you give us policy guidance on, if that's helpful.
It doesn't comfort me that much, because I specifically wanted to see the contingency plan alongside the OCFA proposal so that I could make an informed decision on which one or the other.
Here's where I think that's dangerous, Kim, is to, to have your true side-by-side comparison at that point in time. Like, here's the contract versus here's exactly what it would cost to stay, means we have to open up labor negotiations with them right now. That's, means we have to hire outside consultants, we have to commit a ton of staff and HR time to going through labor negotiations internally as if they were to stay. We need to go through an exhaustive process of hiring a fire chief. We would need to open up all of those cans of worms, which I don't think would be the appropriate time to do that right this second. I wholeheartedly agree that we should have a contingency plan in place to make certain assumptions or estimates in, in mind of if we did stay, then what would our action plan be? What, what deferred maintenance are we going to address on the stations? What equipment do we need to buy? What people do we need to hire? How are we going to change our deployment model to mirror the apples-to-apples comparison that we spent eight months studying and, and coming up with those numbers? I mean, I think we need to do that in a parallel path, for sure. But to the point of, I don't think we particularly care to open up labor negotiations right at this second, nor do I think we want to start a fire chief search at this second. So those are the two key sort of expensive variables in my mind that I think we should at least wait per what Councilmember John O'Neill said, and get, let's get a draft of what the contract would look like and take it sort of methodically, one step at a time in that regard.
Mr. Mayor? Yeah, I'm not opposed to a contingency plan, because that's my biggest fear in this whole thing is, you know, we do have to hire a fire, if we do not go to the county, we have to hire a new chief. Think about the morale at that point. If we don't go with the county, you know, we would have to have negotiations and all that. I mean, I'm perfectly fine opening up an item on discussion of a contingency plan, but I, I, again, I, too, I don't want to open up the numbers, because I found in that whole lengthy process, whoever, whatever individual you're talking to, the numbers can change. I, and I understand that, but I know what it's going to take. The numbers, wherever they're at, are going to be where they're at. To improve Garden Grove to where it needs to be, we're going to be spending more money. We're not saving money anywhere, people. This fire department is going to cost, this fire department is going to cost more money going forward than it ever has before because of the, the economy that we're in and the situation we're in. And we're not, we're not Newport Beach or Huntington Beach. We're just, we're trying to stay, improve the quality of the service. So to me, it's all about the best quality of service that I can provide to my constituents in, in my area for the best possible cost. And I think to- And I think to, to rehash the numbers, we still, we need to get that, that final proposal, and then we can open up discussions on numbers again, in my opinion.
In a real high level nutshell, the way I saw the numbers was, there was, there was a lot of back and forth in that pendulum of costs and savings, whatever. And then there was the eight variables that were identified, or however many it was, that were identified as being that agree to disagree between the union and finance staff. And all of those were resolved, except for the ones that cross over into labor negotiations, which is how much raises are they going to get? And what do we do in terms of retention and, what's the other word?
Recruitment?
Recruitment and retention.
Recruitment and retention. You're right. And, and so there was, there was discussion about the steps in eliminating the lower steps to make our entry-level positions paid higher, to make us more attractive as a city for recruitment and retention. And then there was just the raises component. And those were, that was the sensitivity analysis is to say, we're not saying any specific number. We're saying here is the range of if we gave them 0% versus 1% versus 2%, whatever. And it came out that the approximate break-even point was about 5%. The fire union asserted that they would need 7% plus to achieve fifth in the county, which is what they've been sort of banging on the drum for, for quite some time. And that was sort of the point where I said, okay, so we know where the break-even point is, and we know what labor negotiations would look like if we, if we were to open them.
That would sound fine.
Please.
That would sound fine in that calculation, but we got a spreadsheet, and it had a 4.5% labor increase over 10 years.
It wasn't a labor increase. It was an overall inflation increase.
No, no, it's, it's line on right here. It says labor increase 5% or 4.5%.
We covered that previously, but it wasn't all labor.
And then it, look at the numbers. And I think if you get a financial expert in here to really look at these numbers, that if I'm wrong, I'll admit I'm wrong, but if I'm right, that's a significant cost to the city of anywhere from 1 to 1.5 million over.
Right. And the sensitivity analysis adjusted at the last minute to say, if there was a one-time raise in that first year of anywhere from 1 to 5%, and then the rest of those nine years carry on at the either 2.92 or 4.5%.
No, no, it was compounded every year. No, that's how I read the, the line items. It was compounded every year.
No, no, it's compounded, but it was, the, the adjustment was in the first year. Is it?
Go back to the video of the meeting.
Yeah.
I've seen the video.
To me, it was covered.
I think, okay, I'm glad you're, you're satisfied. I'm not. I don't think she is. If, if people are satisfied, say, no, let's not do any more analysis on this.
And you can continue to vote no. You did vote no, and you can, if you're not satisfied, you can continue your vote no.
I'm not trying to convince anybody. I want thorough, accurate numbers. I don't think we have them right now.
Yeah. I think what you need to do is, we do have one, we do have a pretty hard number. We know what the bid is from the Fire Association, the Orange County Fire Association. We know what that bid is, and we know what the projected increases could be. Those are pretty solid. And then we, in negotiations, we might better that deal in, in other things, maybe not money. But if, so then personally, you can look at the numbers. We have a lot of data. We could, we could each individually go through that data again and, and project different things. But keep in mind, we do have a hard bid from Orange County Fire Association Authority. That's a hard bid. I mean, and, and, you know, I think it's a pretty good valued bid, in my personal opinion, but...
Yeah, well, and we also have our own fire department, and we can contain and control our own cost in the future, too. So if you're projecting a 4.5 increase over 10 years for them through the Fire Authority, and you're doing the same here, I think, nobody really has an answer on the deployment model if we, as a city, enact that and partake and do that ourselves. There's a cost savings there. There's a cost saving in those fees. I mean, we, we've, we've kind of like, we're, I think we're fudging the numbers on this one. If you, if you see the spreadsheet, I, same one I see, is, is a cost increase to the city to go over to the Fire Authority. Now, the whole point and purpose was is to save money, to see how much we would save. And again, I repeat myself, in, in all these, all these months, we've never got a spreadsheet that said, you know what, there's a cost savings to the city, it's a, it's a better model over here, all the intangibles that you mentioned. I'm in favor, I, I'm totally supportive of improving our services. I think we could potentially do it in-house and save money by not going over to the Fire Authority. Again, we talk about deferred maintenance, we talk about this. It's not going to change the deferred maintenance. We still have that cost. It's not going to change other fixed costs that we have as a city. Contractually, they're giving us a contract services, service for this, for this, and we're not covering all the costs ourselves, be it fees that we're passing on to business, they're passing on to businesses. So is it, is it our sanitized statement to say, you know what, it's not us passing on this fee, it's the Fire Authority? That's not, that's somewhat deceptive, and that's not fair to businesses. It said, I didn't vote for Measure O to say, hey, turn it around, increase the sales tax O and charge me for the fees for inspecting my cylinders, for inspecting my building, for doing this and that. So, I mean, we have to take a lot of things into consideration to say, oh, we've gone through a lot of numbers. No, we've gone through gyrations of spreadsheets, and each gyration produced not one savings to the city. If we have an expert come in, who we have in-house, look this over, I'll be satisfied. I'll be a private citizen, citizen Chris out there saying, hey, you know what, thank you, City Council, for doing your due diligence, making that extra effort and saving us 15 to 30 million dollars over 10 years.
I presume we do that anyways, since we're talking about internal staffing, and the directive was to...
So I just wanted to say again, so first, contingency plan, please. Number two, I don't, we're, negotiations with OCFA is not going to stop. That's going to continue on. That's going to take anywhere from two to four months, correct, Scott? Because of holidays and stuff, anywhere from two to four. Thank you. In that interim, why couldn't our internal outside person just do what Chris is asking as a safety net to all of this? Because again, let's not forget how up and down this whole process has been for half the year. There's been a lot of personal, emotional, political, you name it, it's been going on. Why not have a third person just give you their opinion? They're here, they're, they're doing work anyways. No harm, no foul. We're still moving forward with OCFA negotiations. I don't, I don't understand what the big deal, what that is. And then, but the contingency plan should be happening regardless, because I think more than one of us thought that that was happening, but I specifically emailed our city manager and our attorney to ask, and that was not part of the motion. So I would like for that to be on the agenda, to be considered as further direction to staff to create the contingency plan. And I agree that the third-party person internally working in interim for Kingsley to just review it and give us his opinion. We're still moving forward with the two other pieces. Why not have a third person give us their opinion?
I still, I still wholeheartedly agree with, that we should be working in parallel on a contingency plan. I think if we agendize another separate action, that somehow...
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to call for the question.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Call the vote.
So what do we vote here?
Yeah.
What do we vote? Could you...
The, the motion was to agendize discussion.
Okay.
For a contingency plan?
No, not, not, not contingent.
It was sort of convoluted.
Tensize.
It had, it had, yeah.
It was contingency plan and a third party.
A third party.
Third parties.
The internal third party, not outside.
The agenda item would be discussion of fire services proposal.
Okay.
Okay. Motion received.
Wait, I haven't voted.
Okay.
I try to make sure that we agendize for contingency plan.
No.
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 More discussion.
On the agenda so that we can vote to have a contingency plan.
No, no, not, 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 not just that. And, and a third party to revisit the number.
So it'll be listed as discussion of fire services proposal. And your discussion at the end, you, you'll, you know, you will give us whatever direction you ultimately decide to do.
Okay. Motion received, three yes votes with four no votes. That's with Mayor Jones, Councilmember O'Neill, Councilmember Bowie, and Councilmember Klumpenstein voting no. And Mayor Proton Beard, Councilmember Kim Wen, and Councilmember Tu Ha Wen voting yes. So motion failed.
So for the record, to our residents, we just denied the right to create a contingency plan. We're not, because it was not on the motion.
Yeah, I disagree with that, because I still wholeheartedly believe that we should...
You can wholeheartedly agree with me all you want. It was not the motion at the last meeting, so it's not being done. I specifically asked city manager and our attorney, and they told me no. The contingency plan was not part of the motion, so it's not being done, which is why I wanted to agendize it, to include it as part of their direction. So to be clear, we have just voted to not have a contingency plan.
Matters, Councilmember O'Neill.
I, I think that covers it for me. Did I wish, I hope everybody had a happy Thanksgiving. Let's just end it with that.
Okay. Yeah. I hope everybody had a great Thanksgiving. I hope you have a great Christmas and holidays coming up. Keep in, look at the calendar for Garden Grove, because there's a lot of things on the calendar coming up, community meetings, a lot of good things happening, Christmas tree lighting, the Winter Fest, a lot of stuff. And then mainly, you know, make sure your house is in order with your Christmas lights, you're doing things safely. We've had way too many fires lately and deaths, especially in District Two, and throughout the whole city. So smoke detectors, put your new batteries in, and please do stuff safely, and, and we'll see you at the next meeting.
Well, I concur with Councilman John O'Neill. Be safe. This is, we getting to the holiday spirit, so drive safely. And I will see you in next council meeting.
Councilmember Kinnear.
I just wanted to make a quick comment. Councilmember Beard, I just want to say that it's been a pleasure working with you the past two years. I want to thank you for your time and the conversations we've had. I've enjoyed going to events with you. You've always been a gentleman and made me laugh, and so it's, it's been fun. Thank you, and I wish you all the best.
Likewise, likewise. Thanks.
I just want to thank you for your services for the last many, many years as planning commissioners, chairman of planning commissioners, city council. And it's a great pleasure sitting with you throughout the years.
Thank you. Likewise, thank you.
Okay. And also, I would like to ask staff to think about public safety and inform the public about what they need to do when the city will be closed for Christmas holiday. And I know it's still, you know, weeks away, but a lot of people still do not know what to do when they have a need to call public works for, you know, things that, that issue that caused their electric city or water to be turned off. And they call the city, and the city, no one here is to help them, other than they need to, they need to know that they, during those time, they have to call the dispatch, police dispatch, in order for them to, to get in touch with the public work, to send someone to their properties. A lot of people doesn't know how to, to deal with that, and communication is never enough. So I would like to ask staff to look into it and let people know ahead of time.
Thank you. City Manager Stein. Yes, Mr. Mayor, and Councilman Bowie's point, we'll try and put that into, on steroids for good, good communication going into the upcoming holiday. So appreciate those remarks. We do, I want to remind the public, let's hope for no rain, but we have our holiday Christmas tree lighting ceremony in Village Green Park on Saturday from 4:00 to 8:00. We're watching the weather closely. Right now, it looks like there's going to be some rain. You know, we're bringing in a mountain of snow for kids to sled on and stuff like that, so we have to be, pay attention to that. So we're hoping that, we're hoping that it won't delay our plans. Community Services is working on some backup plans for the community if it, if the event does get held off. But, but, you know, we're crossing our figures and hoping that we can still hold the event. It's Saturday from 4:00 to 8:00, and I look forward to announcements on that. I do want to remind the community, you know, working with our Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce, our Buy-in Garden Grove local shopping campaign is in full swing right now. We're encouraging, the city is encouraging the community to participate in the Buy-in Garden Grove campaign. Black Friday goes big, just happened a few days ago, and we're continuing that local shopping from now until Friday, December 14th. Garden Grove shoppers who collect $50 or more in total register receipts from any local business can win $500 cash or a one-night stay at the Great Wolf Lodge, Southern California. All you need to do is just save your receipts, bring them into the Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce on Main Street by December 14th to be included in the raffle. You can visit our website or social media sites to learn more about it. And, you know, as always, just, you know, remember when you're shopping local, you're helping all of our, our businesses, helping keep our tax dollars here at home. You know, that all goes for public safety, roads, bridges, parks, other quality of life needs in our community. So just wanted to get that announcement out. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I believe we do have a closed session item, correct? So we're going to adjourn to closed session, and then we'll come back if there's any reportable action thereafter. Thank you.